This is the Special Committee of the Whole Meeting, our Budget Workshop, November 6, 2017. I'd like our Deputy City Clerk, Carrie Parker, to call the roll, please.
Jacobson?
Here.
Vanuken?
Here.
Markwart?
Here.
Fagan?
Here.
Noriko?
Here.
Verbeck?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Ate President.
Tonight's Single Item Agenda Is a discussion and workshop, the first one of this year, on the FY 2018 Proposed Annual Budget. I would remind folks in our audience tonight that The Finance Advisory Committee, upon which this council will rely for their recommendations, and we will not be discussing those specific recommendations on this first workshop, they will be forthcoming. We will also have a similar meeting tomorrow evening, a Special Committee of the Whole Meeting to continue our Budget Workshop. I would like to Mention that we are going to have a few people sort of streaming in here sporadically, so I am going to turn it over to our Finance Director, Molly Talkington, in just a moment. I would like to, just for the benefit of our city council members tonight and for our audience, those folks who will be drifting in, are drifting in from our Police Department, where we've had a full house for our meeting on public safety. At that meeting, I was able to make a few remarks, as was our City Manager, Anne Marie Gora, our Community Development Director, Joellen Charlton, and the bulk of the meeting was hosted by and spent a good share of the time speaking, and that was our Police Chief, Jean Lowry. It was during that meeting That we discussed What is on the cover of our budget. I must say, our voluminous FY 2018 budget, and that is Safety and Development. Those are the two major focuses, and we discussed those even tonight at the Meeting on Public Safety. So those folks will be coming in. I would suspect Joellen will be here. I see Patty Hop instead. Our Assistant City Manager is here, and Marie Gora tends to come over. And I think Jean Lowry is gonna come over also, because as we know, that safety portion of our meeting tonight, or that safety portion will be a segment of our meeting tonight. So with those prefacing comments, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Our new Finance Director, Molly Talkington. Molly's been here for six weeks, and from what I understand, she's acclimated quite well. And We welcome the opportunity to work with you, to hear what you have to say, and Know that you're gonna be part and parcel of leading us through this exercise that we call our Budget Workshop. We have one person to, who has thus far signed up to take part in public participation, and we'll get to that gentleman, Duane, after Molly makes a few remarks, and then we'll proceed with discussion amongst our City Council. So with that, Molly, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you stole my thunder a little. The theme for the budget is safety and development focused. The 2018 budget is balanced. It meets the financial policies that the council set up where funding allows. And in that, I mean, the general fund reserve is at 26.2%, or 10 million, where your target's 25% of expenditures. Property tax levy fully funds police and fire pensions only. The remaining part of that policy is unfulfilled with this. And then the water and operating fund reserve is at 26.1%. And again, the target for that is 25% of their operating expenditures. So let's just look at your balances. So the general fund reserve, you guys have made great strides, from what I can tell, because to have a balance of 22,000 in 2010, that's a very low balance, and you've had to make strides here, and lots of budget decisions in these last few years to be able to build your balance back up. And so for the 2018 budget, as it was presented and on the website, the balance is the $10 million now. What happened since we released the budget on October 25th, between now is that council authorized the purchase of one property In the FY 17 budget, so I added the blue line, so you can see the effect of the purchase of that property. And it keeps the reserve fund balance at 25%, above 25% in FY 18. And it's the blue line, if you can see it. Historical expenditures and revenues. You can see kinda, the dip down is because that's a half a year. You switched to calendar year, so the 2016 and a half is only for a half a year. But historically, your revenues are above your expenditures or close to. So 2018, we're right there. We're right near each other, but there are a few one-time expenditures in the 2018 budget That bring the expenditures above. But that's a good use of fund balance with staying above your target of 25%. This is a very busy slide. You have a lot of funds at the city. So this pie breaks down all the funds for the city, but the top five I've listed on the left-hand side. This general fund is 38.6 million. Police and fire pension funds together are 9.6 million. Transportation fund, 8.5 million, and the water funds, all of them, are 7.3 million. And then TIF number one is 7.1 million in revenues. So let's look at some of your major revenues. This is the state sales tax. We're including 2% growth. This is showing some signs of growth. Again, it's slow growth, 2% slow growth for revenues. That's a trend throughout the state. But it is growing, and there is some adjustments in the FY 18 revenues for known developments that you've had in the city, or new restaurants that have come online, and different things that will help support the sales tax And will bring additional sales to the city. So that kinda echoed again in your home rule sales tax. So on this graph, because, and we'll talk about it later, staff has included a recommendation for a 1% rate increase in the home rule sales tax. I put that kinda with the dashed line. That portion is related to that 1% rate increase. But if you look at the base before we put the rate increase in, there's a 1% growth built into home rule. Again, slow growth, but the trend is upward. And here's a look at your 26 property tax levy by district. This is the 2016, because right now, all the districts are working on their 2017 levy, and we'll talk about that next. But I wanted to show, if you're looking at a dollar, the city of DeKalb is about 9.5% of the overall bill in which citizens pay. So the very first part of your financial policy for the property tax levy Is that the tax levy will cover police, fire, and IRMRF pensions per the actuary calculations. So With that said, the levy that's being recommended is to continue where you were last year. It fully funded police and fire pensions, and only $72,000 of the IRMRF pension. So you're not meeting that very first obligation you have in your policy for the property tax levy. And when we start to look at police and fire pensions, the actuaries came and spoke. They built our actuarial valuation with an interest rate of return of 7.5%. That's where we're currently at with both police and fire pensions. But they did give strong recommendations to moving the interest rate of return down. So the options they gave and the funding amounts they calculated show, if we bring that interest rate of return down to 7.5 Or to 7.0. So on here, on this slide, it's showing you the obligation for police, then fire, then the total of them together, and what the increase would be for the 2016, over the 2016 levy, so the increase into the 2017 levy. So just to fund it with the same interest rate assumption is just short a $400,000 increase for police and fire pensions. If you decrease the interest rate of return to 7.25%, it's $657,000 increase. And then if you go down to the 7%, it's 956,000 dollar increase for those pensions. But what that's doing is making a short-term increase, but for a long-term gain, because you're reducing the amount of unfunded liability you add in each year When those pensions don't make that 7% or 7.5% interest rate return assumption. So even if you have a good year and it's 6.5%, you still have 1% that you assumed we would make. And so you, that gets added to the unfunded liability. It's essentially An additional amount of money you need to fund in the following year. So in each year, you keep adding to that unfunded liability, it's harder to get ahead of the pension. So if you lower the interest rate, the odds of hitting 7% in any one year is greater than 7.5%. And even if you hit 6.5%, now you're only going a half a percent that you have to make up versus 1%. So in the long run, it will save money for the pension funding. But that's a long-term look at funding for those two.
What have our average returns been the last three and five years?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
What have our average returns been the last three and five years?
You know, I don't know that offhand, but what I know is, with Gatsby 68, in the actuarial return, they have to put what the financial advisors are targeting for both pension funds. And one's targeting around 6.5%, and one's just under 7%. So they're not even targeting your 7.5% that you have in the actuarial assumptions. And then the other, IRMRF, this is for non-police and fire. The pension for this is only about $1.1 million. $72,000 of it will be covered by the tax levy. That is the same amount that we covered last year in the tax levy for this pension fund. And as you can see, this is a much smaller pension fund than police and fire. And if you look at the trend line, it's, looks almost flat, but it's declining slightly. So the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund has been very good at getting higher returns. It's more of a pooled group throughout the state, so they have a larger group invested into it. And I would say, in the state, it's probably the one that everyone looks up as kinda the gold standard of how to fund a pension fund. So the returns, and what we're funding in the level for this pension are, it's good, and we fund at a lower level than we do with police and fire. So we had done the five-year plan, and I thought it'd be helpful to put some of that information into the slide. So here's your comparables. When we look at property tax levies, now mind you, this is for the 2016 fiscal year for These comparables, so we're almost two years behind. But we are going to update this information as we do the five-year plan each year. This was kinda the first draft. And you can see that DeKalb is really the third lowest in our comparables that are non-college towns. And then the upper corner, we're the second lowest here for, when you're looking at the college towns. And then our levy, actually for 2016 here, is about 5.1 million. The 2017 levy with the interest rate at the 7.0% would be 9.3 million. But the good news is, you've been doing things here, one, to build back your fund balance, which that was excellent. But you're making strides and efforts here in the city to spur development, and that shows in the taxable property of the city. So this graph is showing, you had a peak of what our taxable property, kinda the base where your property tax is calculated from, was 2008. And like every other community, it went down during the Great Recession. So you hit a low here in 2014, but we've been picking back up. So for the 2017 taxable property base, there's a 5.2% increase over the 2016 levy. But the good part about that is, 42% or $11 million of it is from new development. So you're expanding the base in which the city exists. So when we go to look at the impact on the homeowner, we need to take out the new development. The new development helps, so this is showing the impact of the three different options for the police and fire pension, but including some of that new growth. So the very top, the blue, they're all on a market value home of 150,000. And so the blue is keeping that 7.5% Interest return rate. And so if we just jump over to the very bottom, last row, in the blue, the annual increase would be $249 to a homeowner of a $150,000 home. If you change the interest rate of return to 7.25, that increases to $288 annually for a homeowner. And if you go down to the 7% rate of return, the increase is $306 annually. And now we'll look at income tax. So income tax is A per capita with the state of Illinois. It's at what we call state shared revenue. We tend to use the Illinois Municipal League's estimates. And I'll tell you, when I was at the city champagne, I checked it one year to see where we were, and I was a penny off of their estimate. So we trended very well with the Illinois Municipal League, and I think that's been the story for most cities In the state, because they do a very good job of working with the state and finding out kinda what's going on at the state to Give estimates. So based on their estimates, we originally put the budget together, like I said, in October on the 25th. It was released. So we had a higher assumed rate of per capita. So you can kinda see at the top, At the very last column to your right, the 2018 proposed, the 100.3 is per capita. And then there's a blue figure below, the 89.5 per capita. So what happened is, on November 1st, IML released an updated revenue estimates for this. And What they had thought would happen is, we've had positive growth, wage growth in the state. We've had low unemployment, so therefore you would think that individual and corporate tax receipts would increase. However, there's been a decrease of about 6% on individual income tax receipts, and for corporate income, it's about 32% below where they had estimated. So something's going on with this tax. And that's the information they've gotten from the state. It's something we're gonna continue to watch with the Illinois Municipal League. And same with the corporate, so basically with the corporate income tax, seven out of the 12 months, the receipts were low, and this is something that IML stated has never happened before. So something's out of whack with this tax. So the, basically, the cumulative total is that, When we come back to you, I'm gonna show you our updated projections and any changes. We'll include the purchase of the property. But we're gonna look at revising your income tax total as well, because it should align to the new estimates that we've received by IML. But they are not in the current proposed book online, because they came after the release of that. For expenditures, we're at 95 million. Again, this is kind of a busy slide, because there are a lot of funds, but the top five are on your right, or left-hand side. You have general fund at 38.7 million, the TIF at 10.7 million, transportation fund at 8.2, water, all funds, 8.1, and police and fire pensions at 7.4 million. General fund revenues. Since this is our largest fund, and when we look at general fund revenues, we are heavy on sales and use taxes for the city. You can see property taxes are the next highest, and intergovernmental, that includes the income tax as well. So when we look at our general fund revenues as compared to other municipalities, you can see we're a little on the lower side of our regular comparables. Where all the red bars is the city of DeKalb on both of the slides, or both of the graphs. And then against our community, or, sorry, college communities, we're second, we're just above Charleston, and we're below Urbana.
Molly, before you move on?
Sure.
So what does that compare to, of a percentage of their general fund expenditures for each of those towns? So like, or their total budget? So ours is 30 million out of about 85. And Bloomington's 94, but 94 out of what?
So their expenditures for Bloomington is 81.1. And that'll be in like three slides where you can see their expenditures.
All right, thank you.
And this is all in. The comparable year again is in FY 16, so you know. So as we compare per capita, DeKalb is one of the lowest. If the FY 18 per capita I put on here, it'd be 876. And if you look at where that'd kinda move us in this chart without, That's assuming no one from FY 16 increased as well. It would move the DeKalb kinda red bar below Hannover Park and just above Sycamore, because Hannover Park's at 903 and Sycamore's at 856. So we would be up a little bit if, we're assuming no one else changed their spending habits, or their revenue intake, sorry. And again, you can see we fall in the same place for the college towns, even on a per capita basis. So when we look at the expenditures, We're heavy on public safety. And if you look at this, you can see police is 35.6%, Fire, 29.2, and public works adds about another 10%. And that is, if you put all three of those together as your public safety, that's really the main portion of your pie. Your tax dollars are going to support those public safety efforts. So when we look at the general fund expenditures, here's that other side of there. You can see that, well, we had 30 million in revenues, we have 30 million in expenses. And we move up a little bit on the university communities above Urbana, on this graph in 2016. And then on a per capita basis, if we were gonna move, Assuming no one else increased their expenditures, That the FY 18 per capita for DeKalb would be 878, and that would move us just, again, a little bit above Sycamore, right below Romeoville. So our key priority is safety, and I think I get to handle Chief's safety here. He's not here yet. So our key priorities this year are safety is being the first one. And there's really a multi-year staffing plan for police. We have streets and fleet support, including the budget recruitment, training to support the police department efforts, and citywide as well, the police and fire pension funding, which we discussed on the levy, Purchase of digital radios for both police and fire. And then we're including the termination of the Peace Road Interchange Agreement. So I'll start there. That agreement is with the county. It was to expand the Peace Road Interchange, essentially the county loaned us funding to pay for that expansion. And as of 2012, we've paid back with interest what we would have paid if it were a straight loan. It so happens that this agreement got tied to a different agreement, where it was 40 years long, and if we continue to pay on this agreement, we'd be paying over $7 million When we've already met the obligation that we would have had if we had gone with a standard debt issuance. So this will add about $245,000 to stay within the general fund And used to support these core services of police and fire, public works, and everything you see in the general fund, instead of us transferring it to the county.
Have we talked to the county about that? Are they on board with that? Or are we making that decision unilaterally?
So the council has the opportunity to End this agreement at any point in time. And there's a clause to it that you can end your sales tax portion, and then that would terminate the agreement. However, we were going to speak with the county to enter into agreement that we both acknowledge, Essentially that we've paid the debt, and they were a great partner, which they were, To help us fund that, and then that they will agree with us as well.
Yeah, Dave, this was explained to me this past week when we had the, what did you call those? You had a?
Preliminary Information Exchange Meeting.
Preliminary Information Exchange. And what we thought we'd do is to run this by as a, as a global budget, if you will. But we need to talk with the folks from the county, to Gary and Mark, on this. And I don't know, Anne Marie, do you wanna add anything more to that? I think those are the two folks that we wanna, we wanna spend some time with.
Yes, I think both the mayor and I need to talk to our counterparts at the county. That conversation has not taken place yet. But if you look at the agreement, which has been reviewed by our attorney, The city council can cease the agreement. It's our goal to take a high road in conversations with the county, to thank them also kindly for providing that funding mechanism to the city Previously, when the city needed that help. Our financial analysis has shown, we fulfilled that obligation above and beyond. If we had done conventional, either a conventional loan or gone out to bonds at that point in time. And so really, we feel like this is the appropriate time to end the agreement as of January 1st, 2018.
Again, I know we've had this conversation before in the city, and the answer we've gotten previously is that the county wasn't willing to release us from that contractual obligation, whether we felt we had paid them back or not. I know the answer we got four or five years ago, we had the conversation, was a contract is a contract, and y'all signed a bad one. So I mean, that's why we've continued to pay it. I'd love to see some movement, but it just surprises me that we haven't even had that conversation to see If they're, I mean, they're doing their budgeting and their things as well right now. I would imagine they have that in their budget as revenue from them. And it's just sort of surprising to say, hey, we're gonna end something without even having A conversation with the other party involved in the contract. So that worries me a little bit.
I can just add that I wish our city attorney was here tonight, because I asked him to look specifically at the document. So I can tell you, the way that it was written when the city signed it Is that the city council can execute and terminate that agreement, and he could go into specifics as to what steps you need to take to do that. But the city council is in the driver's seat of ending that agreement and fulfilling our obligation. Our preference is not to go that route, is to have, is to take a very high political route, road, And enter into, whether it's an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement, or some type of letter just acknowledging, It's probably, has to be some type of agreement acknowledging that the city has fulfilled its obligation, and to thank them very much for coming to our aid when we needed it.
Okay. Also, there's the digital radios. This'll be a $300,000 one-time purchase. And what it is for is, police is on the first generation of their digital radio platforms. Their portion of this is about $100,000. But fire is not on digital radios yet. So there's a federal mandate to become, to be on digital radio, but also for the interoperability Between like the city of DeKalb, the county, the city of Sycamore, that that digital radio platform provides. The fire's portion is 200,000. What is not in here is, fire has applied for a grant for that funding. It's too early to include it. So this is being put in here as a use of fund balance. However, if we get that grant, that would be great. We would have that. And then you'd have the fund balance to remain in your FY 18 fund balance, and we can look at it again for FY 19. So there is some hope on the horizon that there can be an offset with grant funding for this digital radio purchase. But the main premise for this one is, there is a need to become interoperable with the other communities. And since Chief isn't here, I think I'm gonna jump ahead to streets and fleet, and we'll have Tim go over streets and fleet for you.
Thank you, Molly. If you recall, in our streets and fleet presentation That we made earlier this year, we talked about our current position with regard to fleet. We talked about the last 10 years in fleet, we've been investing, investing about $300,000 per year. And that has created a backlog of about $4.3 million in need. We believe we should be at about $1.4 million per year In order to get us back to where we were about 10 years ago. This current budget contemplates $369,000. So we're really not changing our habits on this particular budget. This will include one dump truck, three police squads, And support vehicles for the fire department and community development. In this, in the area of streets, recall in the asset management plan, we talked about the last 25 years, we've been investing about $860,000 per year, Which has created the current condition of our streets being in disrepair And needing about $13 million per year To improve them to the level that our residents desire. We recognize that that was a We recognize that that was a stretch goal, and that we, in getting there, an intermediate goal might be around 3.8 million. And so we talked about the 1.4 in fleet and 3.8 in street, and we proposed a number of different mechanisms to generate that revenue, including a local gas tax, vehicle stickers, trash hauler fees, and a 1 percent sales tax. The current budget does not contemplate that, but we do have a street program in the budget, a street maintenance program. We are anticipating to use $1 million in MFT, motor fuel tax, that we have some reserve in, to make way in our non-TIF streets. And also, this budget contemplates a reduction in our use of TIF funds from $500,000 per TIF to $250,000. So those two 250s, plus the million, that's 1.5, and then our capital budget fund 50 for another $250,000. So that would be a total of 1.75 in fiscal year 2018 for street maintenance. As you recall, the analysis that was done by the consultants on street maintenance, at 1.75, we're still losing ground. And in five years at that rate, we would lose about 10 points on our pavement condition index. Be happy to answer any questions that you'd have.
David? I remember going back to that study, that it effectively showed us, when we had the preliminary discussions, that in the case of a million or a million and a half or even 1.75, that it effectively made no positive effort at that point. And I know that was the discussion we had had preliminarily, that in trying to come up with a million or a million and a half would be irrelevant, because it would give us next to nothing in terms of actual value or return on that money. So, I mean, how has that status quo changed that now the plan is to do just that?
I can address it initially, then if Director Holdeman or Director Talkington wants to jump in. I know in the asset management plan, when Director Holdeman presented this to the council, there were probably eight different options, and it showed what it would end up doing to the condition of the roads, the pavement index. That asset management plan was also pulled in the five-year financial plan, so that same table. So I think if you look at it, what we were trying to do, a couple of things, address some of the items we've heard from the council. In relation to TIF, and you can correct us if we're wrong, and some of the information we were hearing is, try to free up some of the TIF money to be able to available for other private development projects. Therefore, that's why you saw Director Holdeman make the recommendation to reduce the TIF amount, and look at the other funding sources. Though the amount that he's recommending is not the end-all, and is not the total solution, but we are in such a negative situation, really, we need to invest some additional amount for streets. If you feel that that is negligible, then I think you have to give us policy direction as to how much you want to or not spend on streets. But we're trying to look at a short-term solution in fiscal year 18, and then see what your policy direction is in fiscal year 19 and beyond of how to fund the infrastructure. I don't know if I answered your question, or if Director Holdeman, there's anything else you want to add?
David, do you want to add any more?
Again, in terms on return on investment, I know my understanding was that FAC came back and recommended we keep the million in TIF. But, again, it just, it surprises me to see that we're talking about expending that when just a few months ago, the discussion was it wouldn't do anything, there'd be no value to only spending a million. Either we have to spend a higher amount, or don't spend anything at all, I think was basically the discussion we had six or eight months ago when the consultants were here. And, again, the question becomes, do we do it at this point when it's going to have very little return on investment or value? Or do we aggregate it for a second year? What is the best plan to make sure we're getting value out of that expenditure? Obviously, we have to do something, but what is going to be the best thing for our buck? And what is going to be the best planning going forward? We're talking about 10 percent of what we need. So, again, I think that's something we have to have a more in-depth conversation about. Does it make sense? Where do we use TIF? And where do we believe TIF should be used, and at what level, as the FAC obviously has already discussed? One other question, only because it was something that was brought up this afternoon to me. I know there was a question last year about, I think it was in the 16 and 1/2 budget, if I'm correct, that the council asked for a million-dollar budget in the TIFs for road expenditures, and there was some question as to whether or not that was ever spent.
Absolutely, that was spent. That was in our road program for this year. We have completed that street maintenance, both in TIF 1 and TIF 2 districts. I don't have the final numbers, but it's very close to a million dollars. It bid out at about $990,000. So with the engineering, we were right at, we were a little bit above a million, but we could supplement that with a fund 50, so.
And that was the same in '16 as well?
For '16?
We spent the full million in '16 as well?
Yes, that was the same for fiscal year '16, yes.
Alderman, Noriko?
I need some clarification, because when I was reading the budget and the issue about the proposed 1 percent sales tax increase, and a portion of that would go to, a portion of the additional revenue would go to streets and fleet. But it sounds like, in what Director Holdeman said, that isn't reflected in his budget request.
So, sales tax, the 1 percent rate increase is included. FY '18 does not include a full year. So, the effective date, if council were to adopt it with this budget, the first effective date we could make was the July 1, 2018. And then there's essentially a four-month delay before you collect revenue. So the only three months of revenue are included in FY '18. But what really happens is FY '19, you'll get a full year of that 1 percent, and it will affect what we can spend in fleets and streets.
Okay, so that the, those three months is reflected?
Right, and that does help us, because we've added the three squads.
Okay.
But it is, on that 1 percent sales tax, it is that 70 percent of that is going to go to streets and fleet.
Correct.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
So a good chunk of that change, if you will, is going to go to the streets and fleet.
And actually, can I address the five-year plan?
Sure.
Quickly, I pulled it out, and to respond to you, Alderman Jacobson, it said in the plan that, on page 116, I was reading that, it says, "Many of these scenarios require over $7 million for street maintenance per year. Given the current maintenance program is 1.3, it may not be reasonable to expect such a large increase in annual expenditures to be possible. Therefore, a more conservative scenario has been selected for inclusion in this plan." And so we're trying to do what we can with the dollars that we've been able to identify for this budget.
And I just want to build on that, because I'm looking at the memo that Director Holdeman brought to the council on the asset management plan, and the eight different scenarios. And unless the city council decides that we're going to allocate in the $7 million range, that we are going to lose ground on the roads. I mean, I'm looking at number four, which was $1.4 million, where our current ranking is at, pavement index is at 78. It would slip to 70 within five years, and to 59 within 10, and all the way down to 3.8 million. In five years, it slips to 72, 3.9 million. Five years, it slips to 73. 4.6 million slips to 73, and 2.5 million slips to 71. So really, that threshold is $7 million. At staff, we felt like we had to make some recommendation, because it didn't seem feasible based on previous discussion that there's going to be an allocation of $7 million worth of revenue for the streets. From our perspective, we'd rather see something because of the condition of the roads and the feedback that we constantly get from residents, because it's so apparent that the streets are deteriorating.
Alderman, Fager?
What is, we have the leaf collection budgeted into, what is the annual expenditure for leaf collection?
Leaf collection costs us approximately $100,000 per year.
And did we, we talked about that at one time, about eliminating that, but I don't think we ever made a motion or had any action on that, is that correct?
That was simply one of the options we were talking, I remember, I asked that question, Tim, and that is, what are some of those things that we could cut? What are some of those expendables, if you will? And I think that evening, you're right, we didn't decide anything.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could add, in the next year, one of the items that Director Holdeman is going to be bringing to you and the council is in regards to a solid waste and recycling agreement, because the current term of our agreement will be expiring in approximately a year. I bring that up as it relates to leaf collection, because that could be a policy decision that you may want to discuss at that time, when we look at what services that you all want us to have contracted out by whatever vendor that is. In some communities, that leaf collection can be contracted out. So if you do want to decide policy direction of changing that program this year, great, but we want to let you know that is going to be on the horizon next year, as we review the parameters of how you want that program set up moving forward.
If I may, but leaf collections are a part of the waste management contract, because they do landscape waste as it is. So it would be a matter of the C adapting, instead of doing the curbside pickup, to just having waste management to do it. A number of residents already put their leaves and other landscape waste out for pickup, so it would not necessarily be an additional cost in that new contract.
It really depends on a policy decision. You can go with some communities, go pure volume-based, as you were talking about, where you require the resident to basically bag their leaves, put them out the curb, and potentially sticker them. The other alternative is, other communities will also contract out that leaf collection. We're essentially doing both, and so it's really how, you know, how do you want to proceed now and in the future?
Yeah, but as it says right now, there's no additional cost to residents, and there's no sticker. All they have to do is put it out in a container, and it'll be picked up.
Yep.
Tim, did you have a comment?
Yes, I would like to address the leaf collection as it relates to the total cost for the operations of the Public Works Department. The Public Works Department spends about six weeks in this time of the year. 80 percent of our effort in terms of manpower is directed towards leaf collection. If that leaf collection were not done, we would still have a significant volume of work that we would have those staff do. So if we're talking about leaf collection, we're not talking about a savings, per se. We're talking about doing things that we're not getting to now. In particular, the maintenance of our stormwater system. Our stormwater system is not getting the attention that it should be. And so, and then also, more pothole patching in the fall. And I would like to see us go to more of an in-house patching program. So there's an abundance of need with little resources. And so when we take those resources and put those towards leaf collection, which we, our residents have another alternative, we're actually taking away the resources that could be maintaining other parts of our infrastructure.
Yeah, Tony?
Well, I think what my point in saying is, there was a couple things. One is, I think you had mentioned that it's awfully difficult on the dump trucks, the leaf collection equipment. As you said, there's plenty of work to be done, but, you know, is the value that we receive from leaf collection, is it better? Is it more cost-effective to contract the patching? Or is it more cost-effective to do the patching in-house? I'm saying I believe it might be a better alternative to no longer collect leaves and use our public works to fix roads.
I agree wholeheartedly. I didn't want it to be left with the impression that leaf collection would equal $100,000 in savings in the Public Works Department.
Alderman, Fagan?
And that's what I was going to ask, and I totally hit on that, but really, I mean, we're in terror, and we're not doing any overtime on this, are we?
No.
Leaf collection. And doesn't cause overtime on other work, does it?
Not generally, no.
Okay. So, I mean, if we cut out leaf collection, what are we saving? Nothing? $10,000? We're in terror?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we're getting to do things that currently we're avoiding, or that we're not getting to, that are continuing to deteriorate and will create high liabilities in the future.
Eventually it'll cost us.
Like we did with fleet, like we did with street. Our stormwater needs to have more maintenance done to it, or we'll find ourselves in the same position with regard to stormwater in the next few years.
And then we'd just add, when we presented the asset management plan to you, the first phase was streets and fleet. The second phase is stormwater, so Director Holdeman will be working on that. And then the third phase will be facilities. So we found that in order to take all four of those components and do this at once was difficult to do within a limited time span, so we broke it up. So as Director Holdeman talks about stormwater, that will be coming back to you within the next year, his analysis.
Thank you. Alderman, Fenuka?
Well, whether, it may not be a direct savings cost, we have the opportunity cost of not being able to get other things done.
Yes.
And I think as Director Holdeman has indicated, if we're using the public works folks to patch some of those potholes before we get rain and an early frost or freeze, and those potholes can continue to deteriorate, that's where the extra cost really, we can be avoided a cost rather than a true savings.
Okay, Molly?
Okay. So now, since Chief has joined us, we'll jump back to public safety for police and fire services.
Well, this is just what I wanted to do, come from one meeting to the next. Bear with me, and I'll try and get through this as expeditiously as possible. So tonight, I'm here to discuss the three-year staffing plan for police officers and some of the challenges we face. To do so, I'll introduce this by giving you a bit of a summary. Historically, and this is the short end of history, going back to 2012, our department, when I arrived, was staffed at 58 police officers. We had an authorized strength to be at 62. Many of those vacancies were not filled due to the 2008 budget funding situation that the city was faced with. Early on in my tenure with the city, the council agreed to fill those slots up to 62, and eventually, we got up to 65 police officers, once the targeted response unit was incorporated into the police department reorganization plan. As a result of demands for service and crime trends, the police department, with its own staff, and with leaning on resources from the outside, those resources being Southern Police Institute, the University of Louisville, and Northwestern University's School of Police Staff and Command, which is an internationally renowned leadership training program, we've conducted over the last five and a half, going on six years, four different staff studies. Those staff studies took into account calls for service, crime, demands for service, lost time, overtime, just pages upon pages of data. As a result of those four staff studies, which have occurred progressively during that four-year timeframe, or almost six-year timeframe, I'm sorry, our demands for service continue to rise at somewhat of an alarming rate, and our resources have remained stagnant. As you'll see in at least some of the backup that was provided a little bit late to you- As you'll see in at least some of the backup that was provided a little bit late to you, there's two different tables of university comparisons. We rely fairly heavy on that for guidance to see what other university communities are doing. And I know we often compare ourselves to all kinds of communities, but in this situation in particular, it's probably a very legitimate source of data. Nonetheless, we've risen from thirty-eight thousand and some, approximately thirty-eight thousand, a little over thirty-eight thousand calls for service in 2011, to where we sat in 2016, which put us at about forty-five thousand calls for service. During 2016, we're also sitting on twenty-two to twenty-three thousand 911 calls that had to be responded to. To date, and in preparation for this memo, so end of October, beginning of November, if we remain on track, we're going to see us hit the highest call for service demand that we've ever hit, which would be about fifty thousand for 2017. We expect to stay on track for a number of calls for service regarding 911s, but we expect it to rise as well. In alignment with that, this proposal begins to get its genesis. But there's a few things to qualify about the data. We do not add NIU police department's data to ours. This is our data, no one else's. We do not count many of the things that we do as a matter of routine. We only count things that come through as what we call CAD events, or computer-aided dispatching events, where there's a specific call for service or a proactive measure implemented by a police officer. Since my time with the police department, you may recall, we've gone through the first phase of the 2020 Vision for the Future Plan. We're in the second phase of 2020 now. The original was 20 initiatives in 20 months. The second phase is the same. However, some of those, some of those items in that second phase have languished a bit in regard to implementation due to staffing. We continue to use community-oriented policing techniques, problem-oriented policing techniques, intelligence-driven policing techniques to address our deployment of resources to the street. Some of the things are points for clarification for the community. Several community members have raised concerns whether or not we triage our calls for service, whether or not we staff accordingly or have stagnant staffing. In regard to the first, we definitely triage our calls for service, emergency calls are responded to as a top priority, even when we're handling other calls. We will leave those calls that are non-emergency to go handle the emergency calls. In regard to how we, how we staff our shifts, we have a staffing plan based on the data, the demand for services, which is in particular involving call volume, and we address our shift staffing based on that. It's done by hour of day, day of week, month of year. So that staffing plan, that model changes from month to month. There's a necessity in that because we've begun to rely very, very heavily on using overtime to compensate, to ensure the community has the baseline services that they deserve. Then we move into the, our proposal, the 3-2-2 plan, and why we think there's a need for it, and where we stand today. So again, I've already talked to you about calls for service and things of that nature. Let me talk to you for a moment about what we term out-of-service officers and their impact on minimum staffing. When we evaluate on an annual basis our absences due to sick leave, military leave, family medical leave, workers' compensation, such as on, on-the-job injuries, and any other time we lose, such as vacation or funeral leave, all of those things count as lost time for hours we lose on the street. On average, we're seeing 2.5 full-time positions being vacant at the city at any given point in time. This is particularly true of this year. In addition to that, based on the, let me, let me back up just one, one position on that. In regard to that 2.5 full-time positions, it's primarily based on the staffing and lost time of categories I just previously stated, just for clarification. We also have another two full-time positions on average over the past few years during the transition of hiring and training a new officer. And I think that's data that needs to come to the attention of the council. So what happens is, when you add 2.5 and four, and two together, you get 4.5 officers, and we all know we can't cut a human being in half, at least legally in this country. And so you really lose five police bodies at any point in time for staffing purposes. So let's look at hiring a new police officer. From the moment we have a vacancy created by a resignation or other departure from the police department, and our, our turnover rate and attrition is extremely low. In the nearly six years I've been here, we've lost two police officers to anything other than retirement. One went to a larger police agency, and one left under less than honorable conditions. From the time we, since 2015, the average amount of days transpired between the time an officer is hired, I'm sorry, there is a vacancy occurring, so let me repeat that. The average number of days that transpire from the time there is a vacancy to the time we begin and actually hire a person is 226 days. Now, that's the average. That means there are some categories that are exemplars, being over 300, some approaching nearly a year. So if we take that 226 days and add the amount of time it takes to academy train a police officer, that's 98 days. If we take the field training experience, which is another component of ensuring a police officer can work solo or autonomously on their own, that's another 84 days. So from the time we have a vacancy till the time a police officer is ready to perform their duties in a street-oriented situation alone, 408 days transpire. It's a tremendous impact. And when I look at it, I look at it from the, from the perspective of, if I was a council member, I'd say, well, gosh, if we do this hiring, when would, when would we see an impact on overtime? Well, I have to be honest with you. We, if we hired all seven tomorrow, we wouldn't see that impact for probably over a year. And knowing that that's not going to occur, you have to, you have to do it commensurate and build it out for each hiring phase. So there is an impact, that there is a positive impact to being appropriately staffed, and I'll mention that momentarily. So what is, what, how has the police department been impacted by short staffing? Well, I don't know how many know it on the council or in the community. I've said it publicly on more than one occasion, but we, we require our command staff to work the street, to fill vacancies, to ensure that we have the appropriate amount of staffing. Our patrol division is the backbone of the police department. It is the first to respond to our community, the first to be there, the first face our resident C, and sometimes the first person administering lifesaving techniques to save a life, intervening during the course of a violent act, or unlocking a car, whatever the service may be for someone who's inadvertently locked their keys in their car. When I look at that, there's also been some strategic impact within the department. One, I've got a slot open for a deputy chief. I have declined to fill that for, for approximately a year. I'm not going to fill that position at this time to ensure that we have staffing on the street. We also have a vacancy in our detective division. We actually have, will have a second one coming up shortly. I have not filled that vacancy and may not be able to fill that subsequent vacancy due to staffing on the street. How is that a huge impact? Well, right now, when we've suffered a tremendous amount of violent crimes, we put a lot of reliance on that detective division. The more we weaken it, the less effective they are. The less effective they are, more chance of repeat offenses. In addition to touching base one more time, again, we triage our calls, we staff according to a plan, we absorb certain hits internally to ensure we have adequate staffing and patrol. When I look at our reliance on overtime to maintain police service, with one exception, we have gone over budget on our overtime nearly every year that I've been here. I don't see that changing this year. We're also witnessing a dramatic decrease in resources we can rely on within the law enforcement community, and especially our partner within Northern Illinois University Police Department. When I came here in 2012, they were staffed with 72 full-time officers. That was far more than even the city police department head. They're currently down to 42. They've had a reduction of 30 police officers in a very short period of time. There are times that they only have two police officers on the street to, to accomplish their mission, to respond to the students and the other needs of the university. However, it's pretty clear that since October 25th, multiple police agencies have come to our aid to get us through in dealing with these shootings. That being said, that aid's not going to be there forever. Those agencies have their fiscal issues internally as well, and they can't continue to be here for the DeKalb Police Department. But I want to at least say publicly to the community and to this council that we are exceedingly grateful for their service to us. I also want to point out overtime. When you look at overtime, it's a, it's a, it's a, an allotment in a budget. We get so much per year, and recently, we've been pretty much fixed at a, at a status quo budget. So what does that mean overtime? That means there's diminished buying power in regard to our overtime budget. What does that mean? Well, it means that overtime costs us per hour less than 2012 than it does in 2017. So the actual number of hours of benefit that this police department and this community get from having officers on the street is impacted by that decreasing buying power of overtime. There's some really good examples of why appropriate staffing and the effective use of limited overtime has, has a positive impact. When we were up to our full 65-staff allotment for a brief period of time, a couple of years back, we created a two-person overlap shift that addressed the specific high-call volume between the day and afternoon shifts. When we implemented that shift, we saw significant reductions in overtime. Internally, I also look at another division's examples of where we've had success when we've been appropriately staffed. I came to this council and asked for additional part-time dispatchers to assist in alleviating some of the human needs in regard to our dispatching center and taking calls and attempting to get as many as three dispatchers on per shift because of the call volume. Prior to the implementation and approval of that process by the council, we were seeing extremely high numbers of overtime and burnout in our dispatch center, causing some significant attrition. Since we've implemented that program, we've not only seen attrition decrease, but we've also, also seen a significant decrease in overtime. I'll go through this very briefly, but I want to touch on the negative impact of, of staffing and staffing inadequacies, workload and overtime on the components that are key to our community, first being the negative impact to the community. In the backup material we've provided for you, or in the agenda memo itself, one, one component is response time. So we took the month of September in 2017 to look at two four-hour blocks of time, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM, and then 5:00 PM to 9:00 AM, or 9:00 PM, so eight hours in total for the two blocks, and looked at the average number of calls during those timeframes, and when they were staffed with five officers, what the response time was, and when they were staffed with seven officers, what the response time was. On average, from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM, 26 calls for service come in within that four, four-hour period. If you realize that our, our minimum staffing generally is six police officers and one supervisor, and at times as low as four police officers and one supervisor, 26 calls can go a long way of consuming your time. Forty-five percent of our calls for service require more than one police officer. Forty-five percent. That's significant. It's not one and done in five minutes. When we look at 1:00 to 5:00 PM, that call volume, when we have five officers on, on duty, the average non-emergency response, we did not include 911s because those are triaged immediately with an immediate response, but the average wait time for a citizen to see the face of a police officer is 19 minutes and 34 seconds. When seven officers are on the street dealing with the call volume, the average non-emergency response time between 1:00 and 5:00 PM is 12 minutes and 14 seconds. The difference between five and seven police officers is a total of 7 minutes and 20 seconds. In a non-emergency call, a lot can transpire in 7 minutes and 20 seconds, and I don't think there's anyone on the council or in this room that want to wait those extra minutes to have a police officer respond to their need. We saw the same data reflected when we looked at the 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM timeframe. That difference between five and seven officer staffing was four minutes and six, a little over four minutes and some change. I think my calculation there is wrong. Here's another significant impact on our community. Although we deploy a host of community policing initiatives, a host of problem-oriented policing initiatives, and what I consider some of the most proactive measures of a community our size in the state and maybe beyond, we see a steady, a steady decrease in the amount of hours available to address proactive community engagement measures or proactive policing measures like foot and bike patrol. We've always lauded our bike patrol as the special forces of the patrol division, and the number of hours available for those, for that group to be on the street has dropped dramatically. Our availability for citizen engagement in community events has dropped dramatically from '04 to 2016. In brief, to finish this up, we see a decrease in self-initiated activity due to the overflowing demand for service on calls. We have difficulty filling overtime details because our officers are getting burned out. We'll also reflect on that momentarily in another category when we look at officers' injuries on the job. We see delays in report submission, we see extremely limited ability to train our officers, and we might not see the repercussion of that in the short term, but we will see it in the long term. We see inadequate time for thorough investigations, we see sergeants handling more calls rather than supervising, and the, and the list could go on and on. Let's talk, let's talk as quickly as I can about the impact on the police staff. Increased workload means increased calls per officer. I've said time and time again to this community and this council, we have a higher call per service officer annually than cities that are three and four times our size in this region. We've also done comparisons with our university communities, and you have that data in your backup. We are the third-highest call-for-service demand within that university comparison. Pay particularly close when you look at that university comparison that's provided in your backup. Take a good, hard look at Carbondale and how they, how they have evolved. Unfortunately, that path more closely resembles ours than any other path. The additional impact on police staff, we see fewer days off, less family time, fatigue, burnout, stress, officer safety concerns due to limited backup. Again, 45% of our calls for service demand additional officers on the call. Difficulty using benefit time, increased use of sick time, and let's talk about where the rubber meets the road, under risk of injury to the police. In 2016, we had 20 workman's comp or injuries on duty to our police officers. Four resulted from foot pursuits. 10 resulted from resisting arrest offenders. Six were other-related injuries. It could be a slip, trip, or fall, it could be anything else. We had, we had an officer that fell through a porch at one time going into a home. Twenty, that was for the entire calendar year for 2016. So far in 2017, and the data has been updated since this memo went out, we've had 26. We had one just the night before last. Five of those have been foot pursuits, 12 of those have been injuries from resisting arrest from an offender, and eight have been in other situations. All of these things compound themselves, and I keep referring back to that 2016 crime comparison of state/university cities in Illinois that we compiled. I'd also suggest you strongly look at the housing data and quality life rankings we also compiled. The police department staffing study that we, that we've alluded to in our introductory comments tells us middle ground for our needs is 72. That's why the number 72 came to you as a top-to-bottom request for authorization and the 3-2-2 plan came to you. The data is pretty profound, it's pretty voluminous, and it's consistent between Southern Police Institute and the School of Police Staff in Command from Northwestern University. The plan for the deployment of officers, there is some detail in regard to that in the agenda memo, I won't go too deep into it, but the plan is to put these officers on the street. There is no plan to put them in a specialized unit in detectives or some other, some other more elaborate specialized unit. It's to get boots on the ground to address the It's to get boots on the ground to address the problems we have. We're also fully cognizant that if you go down this road and you back and support our public safety initiatives and what we need in this community, we realize that if things do get better, and I hope that's the ultimate goal, we know that this can come back to scrutiny, and we may have to look at these positions again. We do acknowledge that. We've listened to the voices in the community and talked to them and responded to them. The citizens are concerned about this as well. It's my position that we recommend this, but we also need to look at other things that impact this. I wholeheartedly support the 322 staffing plan, and I say this with all due respect and no intent to be coming off in an indignant manner, but we have talked about public safety year after year. I've been here. It's either time to do something about it or stop talking to the police and the citizens about it. In regard to how you could support us in other areas, I think there's a need to review some of the needs and human resources to ensure that we are staffed appropriately, and I would defer to others to comment in regard to that. But when we have staffing needs that take us 408 days to qualify someone and get them hired, trained, and on the street to meet the needs of the community, that's a long time. That's a long time. And our human resources department's doing the best we can, and this is not just a problem in the city of DeKalb, it's a problem in most municipalities in the state and in other agencies at the county and state level. Policing is a career, is a tough career. And I'd also like to interject at this point in time. I'd ask everybody in our community and this council and everyone present in this room to have a thought to their spiritual guide and in their heart for the family of police officer Jamie Cox, a Rockford police officer who is a veteran of the United States military. He's a college graduate. He's a police officer. He has a family. He gave up his life to an offender in Rockford. Rockford, a community, one of the 10 most violent communities in the nation per capita above Chicago, is 45 minutes from our doorstep. I ask that you support this initiative and would encourage any other comments in regard to the human resources component of this. And if there's any questions, I'd answer them.
Alderman Fagan.
You're saying that in other communities with the 408 days, other communities are running the same problem with police work. Is there anything we can do more?
We've already initiated some measures to do things faster. When I first came here, we initiated a recruiting process for certified police officers. That takes almost 100 days out of the process. The turnaround time on qualifying candidates from just a few years ago to where we are now was much faster due to the fact that we were getting more qualified candidates than we are now. We would probably see somewhere between three and five candidates reviewed and one qualified. Then, now, we might see 15 to 20 candidates to go through to get somebody qualified. That's a lot. So that takes a lot of resources. I think on the front end of that, you know, making sure that all of our processes and human resources are timely and appropriately addressed, but there are also human resource needs that come up in other departments, too, and they have exigent needs as well. So, I mean, it's really like going back to triaging police calls, it's like triaging what's important.
May I offer a few comments regarding that process? So when I first got here last year, June, I had a meeting with all department heads, and one of the things that was identified by the chief Lowery was the need to do something to expedite recruitment for police officer. And if you look at, one of the memos that was provided to you in the packet was HR analysis. And when you look at numbers such as retirement projections, you will see that by 2020, we'll have 54 people citywide that will be able to walk out, and out of those, 15 are police officers, and seven in this year alone. And if they don't retire this year, then they're going to be compounded by next year that there's an additional three. So we work really hard with the BFPC, the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, to find a lot of, streamlining out the processes and trying to find alternatives and ways to make the recruitment faster. However, we are not going to take any shortcuts. The chief is pretty proud, and we should all be proud of the workforce that we have. We're never going to take shortcuts to hire a police officer that is going to patrol the streets. One of the things, besides the number of retirements that are looming and the strain that's creating the workforce right now, as the chief said, there's a lot of officers that are injured, and how long can we afford to be straining our workforce? If you're burning out the people that are already working here, you're going to have One of the things that we are struggling, and we are not the only one, is, as the chief mentioned, is recruitment. The state of Illinois is at the lowest unemployment rate since 2010. We are 4.8%. There are jobs out there. Now, I'm not saying that those are the same jobs that people used to have before the Great Recession, but the jobs are there. And we are seeing incredible decrease on the number of applicants, not only in police or fire, but in any other position. Of the people that apply, several, actually the majority, don't even meet the minimum qualifications of the application. Now, as far as public safety is concerned, we have an eligibility list for entry-level police officer that theoretically doesn't expire until October of 2018, but we are already near exhaustion of that list. And once again, the BFPC is conducting more interviews. Since I started a year and a half ago, we conducted two lateral police officer recruitments, and we are going to entry-level police officer recruitments. The struggles that we are having is, as the chief mentioned, we are not going to take shortcuts on the quality of the people that we're going to bring to the city. We are going through 14, 15 candidates to have one or two to be hired. While those numbers are really low, at the end result of hiring for HR and for police, that takes an incredible amount of time as well from the detectives, they're already working on cases, to do the background for those folks. We go through 16 recruitments, if you will, to hire one or two people. So we go through 16 times the amount of work to get two boots on the ground. In addition to all of that, another number, if you look at recruitment citywide from July 2015 to July 2017, and here I'm not even counting the sworn, we had 64 recruitments that we did, and it was not only for full-time. When I say recruitment is the amount of time that HR goes through the processes for every person that's working, either as an intern, a volunteer, a part-time, a seasonal, or a full-time with the city, and that's why the numbers are striking. It doesn't mean we are hiring 64 full-time people, but this year, I just asked, I just got the numbers this morning. So again, from two years, 2015 to 17, we had 64 recruitments just for non-sworn, and right now, in November this year, we are already at number 48. The recruitment process that we are processing doubled, and we are doing this with a part-time recruiter. There is no way that we will be able to support the needs of the police department regardless if we have, even if the council would be very general and say, "Okay, chief, you can hire 15 police officers today." There is no way we can support that initiative when you also have all the other departments in dire need to have competent people to work. And again, when I say this is, we have an amazing group of people that work for the city, and the old saying of doing more with less, we are already doing a lot, a lot, a lot more with a lot less, and we cannot afford to burn out or to really spread thin the amazing people that are already working here for the city. Do you know that unemployment rate I mentioned? Well, there is a lot of jobs out there, and if you start burning out talent, people will leave. And what are we going to do when talented people and people with long tenure will leave? We just need to take care not only to attract a competent, talented workforce, but also to keep the workforce we have. And I look at around the room here, and the chief Lowery is the most vocal, but I do know that all of the other department heads and supervisors are being extremely patient, and while they're helping us going through the obstacles of recruitment at this time. So I would ask that in order to help us to deliver the services that the city, the community needs, that we need support staff to help. The private sector deliver goods, and their biggest cost is materials. The city delivers services. Our biggest cost is the people that are behind those services that we want to provide. The quality of people that you hire and the number of people that you have will directly affect the quality of services that the city will provide to residents. Thank you.
Well, there's no doubt that service is the key word, and if you take a look at our expenses, our primary services are in police and fire. This community wants to continue to do that. Gene, we heard that in your two-and-a-half-hour session earlier this evening. I will say this, and I've talked to the chief about this. We are very blessed in the fact that we do not have that attrition that you mentioned and that turnover. One of the reasons is that we have been competitive as a community in our, what I would call, wage and benefit package. And so I think as a citizenry, we can look at that as a plus. I'm not suggesting that we go backwards from that. As a matter of fact, what this budget suggests is that we need to go forward in terms of numbers. But as you suggest, Gene, it's not going to happen overnight. You know, if we were to pass this budget tonight and say we're going to implement it next week, you're talking, what, a year before we see that first person who is added to the foot, the feet on the ground, if you will, the boots on the ground in our community? Is that a correct assumption?
It's very correct. From an attrition point of view, we have, the vacancies we have and the ones we anticipate are probably going to consume us. So getting up to staff, our allotted staff currently is the main course of action, and then if this measure is approved in the next budget, we would immediately begin working on the other. But you're probably not going to see that until actually fiscal year 19.
I'm sure there's some, Anne Marie.
Mayor, I just want to add, just as for general, for the council and for the community, just to keep this in mind, I know the discussion has been in relation to the police department, but I think what you're seeing with the numbers that Director Randall cited is we are seeing the retirement of our baby boomer generation, and we're seeing that loss of decades of institutional knowledge that are walking out the door, and it's not just happening in the police departments, it's happening in fire departments, it's happening in public works, so across the organization. That's one of the challenges that we'll be facing in the next couple of years as you look at the retirements of the number of people that can retire.
Okay. I'm sure there's a discussion on Gene's comments. Alderman Norrico.
Chief, thank you for the effort you put into, you and your staff put into gathering this information for us. A citizen posed a question to me, you know, basically for you in terms of the overtime, and to what extent have the police staff become accustomed to it so that at the point that the overtime is reduced, we'll be facing some upward pressure in terms of wages?
I really don't think it's a factor at all. If you look back in the data, I look back to the year 2014 when our actual overtime expenditure was $789,000 and some change, and we were, you know, half of that in a budget allotted. I think when we made that reduction from 14 to 15, a big part of that was that two-person overlap shift. And I don't think anybody was, if I understand the question appropriately, banking on that money and going to have an adverse effect from it not being there. I don't think that's even within our wheelhouse at this stage of the game. We have become so accustomed to using overtime to meet the baseline police service needs, primarily maintaining shift minimums. And there are times we work below shift minimums, which is incredibly dangerous for our community and for our police officers. So if I'm understanding your question correctly, I would say the answer to that is it's not a concern to me, and I don't believe it's a concern to the police.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mayor.
Alderman Verbing.
And I believe it's time also for us to consider proactive measures. You know, we've talked about what are some of the other things we can do more proactively. Understandably, our fiscal conditions are challenging, but if we look at things like truancy, for example, we've talked about, you know, what are some of the core factors that are leading to the challenges we face as a community? And if you look over the last three years, we've had upwards of 400, 500, 600 students chronically truant in our school district. So what I'm asking from council is your consideration for Chief Lowery to bring back his truancy initiatives and to further partner with the school district, the regional office of education, and the state's attorney to address some of these core issues, because again, not sending your child to school is a crime, and there's too much of that going on in DeKalb.
Have you talked to Gene about that?
Yes.
But that's going to add cost.
Yes.
That's not in this budget? Okay. Thank you. Alderman Jacobson.
Setting aside the need for additional police officers, which I think is a reality, obviously, the question then becomes how do we pay for it, which I'm sure we'll have a more in-depth discussion on tomorrow. Going through this process now for the sixth time, it frustrates me to hear what almost seems like an omnipresent need for more management staff. When I hear terminology like "we're doing more with less," the reality is we are not. That department HR functioned just fine with significantly less staffing than we have in and out, and we got by. We got our people hired, we got them onboarded, we got their benefits taken care of, we got retirements taken care of, and there was a need to add staff to that department because they were supposedly short-staffed. So we said, "Fine, we'll give you not only a part-time person, but we'll give you a new, very expensive management person," and tripled the staff in that department. And to hear that they're doing more for less, I don't buy some of that mentality. When we look at the overall staffing numbers, as we discussed last year, I have a feeling when you take into account for outsourcing, that we are at the highest, at or near the highest staffing level we've ever had in DeKalb. And when we significantly contracted no-aid, a lot of it was boots on the ground. A lot of it was the police department having to deal with attrition that we're still making up for, the fire department having to deal with the same attrition. The reality is, not only have we hired back all those positions, but we've hired them back into management at significantly higher pay scales, at significantly higher pay grades, and it's stressing everything else we do in our operation. We can't, as we're discussing tonight, cover the amount of money we need to do for our roads. That's our product. We can't come up with some of the money right off the top of our head without raising taxes to deal with safe to deal with safety. That's our product. People are not our product. They are ancillary to that product. Well, I understand you need people to do some of those services. The discussion last year, a year ago at this time, was that council was going to need to spend significant time and energy dealing with what our priorities are and dealing with the budget holistically and globally from a priority standpoint. And I'm wondering to see where that process is here. I mean, you know, we talked about it 12 months ago, that this was going to be a very intensive process, and we were going to schedule the time several months away from the budget necessary, passing dates and those things. I'm a bit confused as to where some of these priorities came from. I know I heard mention that staff thought, and staff did this, and staff has done that. At what point does council weigh in on their priorities to start setting the direction on this budgeting?
So I'll address that a couple of ways. First of all, what Director Tockington brings to the table is the process that they had in the City of Champaign. And I know we've spent time at staff levels where she's been able to articulate where they're and what she wants to bring here is budgeting is more of a year-round type of event. So as we move into next year, we will be having that discussion. I can't tell you the exact timing of it because we have to put that together. So that's point number one. So you're right, we had hoped to get that sooner. We didn't. I didn't expect to lose a finance director in May and have to go through a hiring process to hire our current director, which I'm very excited that Director Tockington is here because she brings a great wealth of knowledge from larger communities, three larger communities that she served, as well as one of those being a university town. Point number two is I know I've worked with the mayor, that we're trying to coordinate a workshop with the council for January to go through some of these issues as to what do you want to see accomplished in the next 18 months, what do you want to see accomplished in the next three and a half years? So I think this ties a little. It may not tie directly into what you're talking about, Alderman Jacobson. And then lastly, just for sake of comparison and just say, I'm throwing out some numbers, but I also just want to make a couple of statements. You're right. I mean, and I've had this conversation and I've made recommendation to this council as far as how to redirect resources. From the very first budget that I presented, which was in fiscal year, the fiscal year 15 budget, I think the title was realigning resources. And that's essentially what I've been doing in the time since I've started is where is the need at this point in time and how do we move resources to be able to deal with that? Specifically, the focus tonight and on this budget is public safety and development because we believe that is the direction that we've either heard directly or indirectly. But we need to get to the point where we have those conversations where you are telling us specifically, "We want this, we want that." We try to, as staff, put together the pieces of the puzzle of the direction that we think we hear in the various meetings. Like when we had the TIF phase-out meeting, we didn't get concrete direction, but we heard certain themes of where you wanted to go. So we tried to wrap some of those themes into this budget. We tried to include a TIF phase-out so that we're weaning the general fund off of TIF as quickly as possible so that we can free up additional dollars that the council then can use for business development. That's one of the themes that we heard. So we tried to look at what are the themes that we heard. The reality, when I got here almost four years ago, you might have had some departments that might have been more appropriately staffed for the size community that we're at, police department, fire department are two of the examples. And I think you can see tonight, we're not even exactly there on the police department. There are other departments that were not functioning at a very good level. So with my, from my perspective, I don't think it's good if you have a department that is not functioning in efficient and effective manner. So the recommendations that you've seen come from me and many of those that the council's adopted through the years are to make sure that all of our departments are functioning at a very highly effective, highly efficient level. And we've talked over and over again about, you know, some of the impacts of those decisions. But just for the public of what we're talking about, to give you a magnitude of, in the general fund, which is basically a $38.6 million budget, between the police and fire departments together, of that $38.6 million, police and fire together represent $25 million. If you put that into percent, that's 65% of our budget. You add in public works department, that's another 10%. So the big three are 75% of the general fund budget. Now, mind you, that's just the general fund side of public works, that doesn't include the water fund. And then you have legislative and five supporting departments at about 4.6 million, 12%. So I'll echo what has been said previously, we're all about people. I mean, our costs are the people that provide the service to the community. So, long story short, we're getting to there. It's taken us a lot longer under Director Tockington's leadership with how she's going to coordinate the budget process. We hope to do that, to have more of those in-depth policy discussions with the council because we want to make sure we're addressing your policy direction.
And I think it's incumbent also on this council to realize what Alderman Jacobson said, and that is that if we've kicked that microscope, if you will, that microscoping down the road as a council, what past councils have done, so be it. Let's grab the bull by the horns and let's, as part and parcel of this budget process, do what it is our responsibility, okay? And, you know, we hear about safety, we hear about development. Those are our two focuses. We must not lose sight of that. And it is, it is going to be very difficult over the next several evenings that we are going to be spending some time together to talk about things like increasing taxes. While we also need to address the fact that we have a problem in this community that needs to be addressed as it relates to public safety and policing. So, we need to be as clear as we possibly can to ourselves, to our staff, and most of all, to the public that we serve, to do the best job we can while, and this is a key factor, while making the decision on whether or not we want to continue to go with that 25% fund balance, which now stands at about $10 million. Is that correct?
With the addition of the purchase, you're down just to $9 million? Or it's between 9 and 10, it's no longer at the 10 million, it came down a little?
10 sounds better, so.
Yeah.
Alderman Noriko.
I would like to address one of Alderman Jacobson's statements regarding the amount of time and effort it takes for recruitment. I can't speak to what is involved in being a police officer or, you know, a fire official or a finance director. I know what it takes for recruitment. And I handled recruitment in an environment that wasn't even as challenging as what our HR director faces. You know, we didn't have to go through the extensive background checks and psychological testing and physical testing and so forth. And even so, it took far more hours than almost anybody appreciated. Plus, you have to make sure that the supervisors are adequately trained because you can do all the best work in the world and present wonderful candidates. And if they can't adequately assess them, you're right back where you started from. So regardless of what way we go with, you know, the HR piece of the budget, I think the amount of work that they have to put into the process to support all the other efforts needs to be recognized.
My ask may also give one clarification to-
Could you get a little bit closer to the mic? Chris, thank you.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. One clarification to Alderman Jacobson's comment, too. The HR generalist position is not a management position. It's just a conversion of a part-time to a full-time employee to a total cost of under $25,000. I just wanted to clarify that.
Alderman Fagan.
I want to stay on task here, and we'll have time to talk about HR and management. But we're focusing right now on the police department, that's what I want to do. Jean, when was the last time you had 100% of your officers on the street?
I would say it was probably in the FY 14, '15 budget cycle.
Right. You know, and by the way, I do respect on putting the boots on the ground rather than You know, I hear, I've not heard one person say anything about not hiring more policemen. I've heard nothing but hiring more policemen. And with that said, even if we give the police department another three positions, you're still going to have that problem, aren't you? You're going to still be short one or two or three.
Yeah, the nature of the beast is always such that because of injury, you know, all the list of things that I went through, that you're going to be lucky when you are fully staffed and fully staffed for any length of time.
Right. And I think that's what people have to understand, that, you know, we need this extra three, minimum, to actually get to where we want to be. I'm sorry, let me take that back. To put that on where we should be today. All right, thanks.
Alderman Jacobson.
Again, I think in terms of public safety, we know we have a need. The question becomes, how do we pay for it? And whether or not we can adjust resources elsewhere to get there, I think is part of the global conversation. And again, I think it's somewhat of a disservice to break it up into modules without considering things holistically and globally of how we're going to do that. In response to some of Kate's comments, I don't think anyone's questioning the amount of work it takes to onboard these people. I don't think anyone's questioning the amount of effort that HR needs. The questioning is the consistent mentality amongst people in this building to claim they're doing more with less when the reality is they are not. That mentality has to go away. We can't have any more staff in this building. We can't continue to add outcroppings of full-time pension liabilities and benefit liabilities. Those days are over. There is no more money to take from the pot. It's gone. So this mentality that we're doing more with less when we've added all this staff, 10 or 15 or 20% specifically in this building, they haven't gone to police, they haven't necessarily gone to fire. There's been a couple hires here and there to make up for spots. The reality is, we are more than fully staffed in this building. And this is what we have, this is what we can afford as a community. Going forward, the mentality has to be, this is what we have. And every year, we have this discussion about budget time, "Well, you know, the council will be more involved next year." "Well, you know, we'll change our efforts next year to discuss what the council's priorities are and get the council down to the base level that we should be at of deciding this budget book that's in front of Jerry." Not after it's presented by staff to us, we should be presenting staff, and they have to make do. That's the reality of how this thing needs to work. We're not here as a rubber stamp. We're not here as the afterthought of getting other agendas to the table. The priorities have to come from us in our discussion, not anecdotally throughout the course of the year based on an errant comment at a different meeting on a different subject. There is difficult conversations we need to have. We have limited resources to deal with some of these crime problems, to deal with some of these safety problems. And the reality is that somewhere else is going to have to give. When I hear our staff saying, you know, there's a direct correlation on burnout and people wanting to leave the organization or people getting hurt based on the fact that they're giving more, that same burnout is occurring with our residents in this town. When they're asked to give three and four and five and $800 more a year to taxes, they're leaving the community. We're not replacing them with quality, high-income earners to make up for that money, which means the real take-home dollars of our already depressed population when we're looking at these slides, which would be the last in every category, home values, average home income, average household income, average two-earner income. We're zero, we're one or zero in every one of those categories. The reality is the money's not there. So then, we need as a council to start discussing how we meet the burdens we have. And to say, "Well, should we have more police officers?" Yes, it's easy to say. How do we pay for it? The reality is, in looking at the budget documents and looking at what was presented in the five-year financial plan, if you reviewed that, at looking at all the information we're giving, staff is asking for 5% to 7% increases every year on our residents for the foreseeable future. That's not an option. So then, we need to have a policy discussion of what we need, what we can afford to spend, and what are targets of revenue for staff to then work with before this budget book is created. And we were promised that last year. That was a specific directive of this council onto management to take care of. We spent money on software to do so supposedly. We directed at last budget that last year would be the last year this mentality would be accepted. I find it very hard to believe that a single staff person, being out of the organization for a few months, when we did bring in someone to fill that seat, was so impactful that we couldn't have those discussions. It wasn't a staff effort we were asking for. It wasn't a staff direction we were asking for. It was a directive to let council and the FAC provide more input for a longer time to describe our priorities. And that was agreed to, and that was the discussion and acceptance last year that management was going to switch their priorities to doing it that way. We get to this point this year, and none of that effort was undertaken. None of those promises were kept. None of those goals and objectives that were specifically decided on by the last council and directed upon staff were made good on. And now we're hearing, "Well, maybe next year." That's not good enough for me. That's not good enough for the 5,000 residents I represent.
Where did you see it go askew, David?
The effort was never made. There was no attempt whatsoever this year to have those discussions. When mid-year and in March and in April, we were discussing it means, "When are we going to have these discussions? When are we going to have these council-mandated workshops?" And time set aside for us to have these discussions, staff has ignored those directives. They've broken the law, our municipal code, by not pushing through, whether it's us doing it or whether it's staff, it's a combined effort, in fairness. We have not followed our municipal code, we have not owned up to our responsibilities, whether it's the last council or now this council coming in, or the last staff or this staff coming in. The discussions haven't been facilitated, they haven't been held. Where that blame lands, whether it's on council, whether it's on staff, whether it's all of our responsibility, which it likely is, the reality is, yet again, now we're talking maybe next year.
I will accept any blame that anyone gives to me that is justified. I will also say that we have two new council people, although one has been-
Involved.
Intimately involved, a little bit more. Michael Verbic, our new Alderman, has been on the Finance Advisory Committee. But to be fair, I'd like to hear some of the, from some of the folks who have been on the council. Is this a fair assessment? And if, well, okay, is it a fair assessment? I also have another question. Tony?
Yeah, no, what David is bringing up is, I believe, is actually, is quite true. That's exactly the way that I felt last year during the- That's exactly the way that I felt last year during the budgeting process. I think it was suggested multiple times that we start in July, as soon as we could put together, as soon as the first revenue projections for the first half of the year were completed, that we start having meetings and discussing potential budget. You know, just starting to lay out the blueprint of the budget and setting priorities. That was exactly what we talked about.
Any further comment?
My sec? I have a second question, but go ahead. Alderman Verbic?
What I would say to Alderman Jacobson, it's still not too late for priorities. You know, we have time to pass a budget, so I'm all ears on any ideas that you may have. And I think it gets back to what you're saying, though, with policy. So it's things like capping expense increases at 2.5% per year or 3% per year, those kinds of things that we really need to get at.
Yeah, before we get to Kate, excuse me, Kate, my second question is going to be just that. At what point, from the 6th of November to the end of December, when we need to pass a budget, keeping in mind what a budget is, keeping in mind that there are amendments to budgets, there are adjustments to budgets during the FY 2018 year? But given those parameters, what I'd like to hear is some suggestions as to what we need to do now to step up, if in fact, this council feels that what Alderman Jacobson says that we haven't been doing since last year, that we can now do now. I'm not trying to look to put a Band-Aid on this. What I'm looking for is to step up and make some difficult decisions. Because had you not even said that, David, we've got some difficult decisions to make as we look at these budget proposals. Okay?
I was just going to say that certainly we were looking for earlier input, but I also think that those of us on the council who have been here for a period of time and heard those statements last year, we bear responsibility also for perhaps not asking enough questions, not asking them early enough, not pushing enough. Because in the absence of that, of some of, you know, the council's efforts, the city manager and the finance staff and the other department heads were faced with the situation to find and recruit a finance director who would have the understanding but needed some time to get an understanding of the DeKalb situation. So, once again, I don't think we're looking at a black-and-white situation. I think we're looking at something that, you know, greater effort could have been made on both sides.
Mayor, can I jump in?
Yes, Mary.
I just want to give a historical perspective. So when you talk about some of those things weren't not accomplished, they were. And if you think of last year, the meetings that were held here were joint meetings between the City Council and the Finance Advisory Committee. So many of the things, Alderman Jacobson, that you've talked about, specifically the FAC addressed. So we started meeting with them early. I can tell you, I sat down with Chair of the FAC, Mike Peddell. It was either February or March. We had several meetings charting out the course of the year as to what items would the FAC review at what point in time. The FAC last year asked, we want to be able to review the results of the audit so that we can see how the results of the audit relate to the budget. We did that. We accomplished that. We brought in the auditors specifically for the FAC. FAC also asked us, they said, we want to meet with the actuaries for the police and fire pension funds to understand what are the assumptions and what are they recommending. We did that. We had a meeting specifically where the actuary came in, went through those assumptions, and then that's a big part of the recommendation that FAC has in regards to the property tax levy. So we went through the revenue projections. The FAC said, we want to be able to analyze the revenue projection, so we did that at the six-month level. So I think maybe, and I will take it upon me if I misheard some of those things separately or differently than all of you. So many of those items that you've asked as benchmark, the FAC has undertaken as part of their budget review. So they've gone more in-depth in the audit, the pensions, the actuarial assumptions, the pension levy, the property tax levy, as well as the budget. I want to address your question or comment in regards to our interim finance director. We brought that person in for twofold. Number one, put together the revenue, the initial revenue estimates for the fiscal year '18 budget, in particular because we knew we were going to be sitting down with the FAC earlier in the process. And number two, to put together the five-year financial plan, which was extremely important for the FAC, we never lost a beat. We finished that document. We put it together. It's over 500 hours of staff time from about over 10 different people. And that's critical because it looks at that five-year forecast. And we're not exactly where we need to be. There's still some tweaking and some improvements that we need to make. So I definitely feel that many of these items were addressed. They weren't addressed by, or brought to the City Council. The last thing I would add is, the conversation, part of the conversation last year and what was recommended in the budget, which is not being spent, was a software for priority-based budgeting. Because when we as staff went to try to implement that, we realized we couldn't because of our financial software. It was so out-of-date that we couldn't even utilize our financial software to be able to collect that data and provide that to you. So that's on me for not directly communicating that to you and explaining that to you. But that was a big part of not being able to move forward by having a financial software that can, that we can utilize in that analysis. So I don't want to be left with the impression that none of those things were accomplished. So when I heard many of those things last year, I interpreted those as, so the technical items, was that, that was the role of the FAC. And the FAC has met more this year and has gone through those. And please articulate, moving forward, the expectation of what the council should be doing in relation to the budget, and we will make sure that happens.
Alderman Jacobson?
Have we been provided with the final report of the FAC?
We have the recommendations. We're finalizing, getting those in a memo to you tomorrow. So we had the last two meetings last week with FAC, last Monday and Thursday, and with all the various meetings going on, I haven't had a chance to review the draft memo by Director Tockington, so those should be going out tomorrow and posted to the website so everyone could see those.
And will we have a joint session this time, too?
We can proceed how you want. The initial intent, when I originally started to discuss the budget process with the mayor and ultimately Chair Peddell, was that there was a view that there would be benefit if the two were separated and the FAC was allowed to dig in deep and look at all these items, which they have done. What Chair Peddell has recommended to both myself and to the mayor is that he would come and represent and go through all of the FAC recommendations. He is not available tomorrow because
Tonight or tomorrow?
Yes, because he's in class. And knowing that for tomorrow's meeting, at least one of the Aldermen will not be here, my recommendation to you is probably to schedule a third budget meeting where he would be available to present both sides of all those FAC recommendations. And I know he will do an incredible job articulating the pros and cons for both of, for all the recommendations. So we're in the process of putting all those together and getting those to you tomorrow.
And the minutes for all those meetings have been posted?
What's that?
The minutes for all the FAC meetings are live and posted?
The last meeting isn't done yet.
They should all be on the website for the particular meeting. And we are now, not only are the minutes posted, but there's an audio for each of the meetings, so you can listen to the full discussion for all the meetings.
Any other discussion from council? Alderman Verbic?
I would request a joint meeting with the City Council and the entire Finance Advisory Committee for their final discussion and input, and I'm willing to be flexible for scheduling that.
How do you feel about that? I was very open. I know Mike Peddell, I've followed Finance Advisory Committee. He's very, very adept at what he does. He's, I think he has a good command of that Finance Advisory Committee, but I would certainly be open to a full meeting.
I think, if I may, I would too. I'm just looking at the calendar. If Mike is in class tonight and tomorrow, I'm assuming that would be next week also. So then, maybe we could set that up for the evening of the 16th. Thursday.
Does that kind of run into any other meeting problems? Anne Marie?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Will that run into any other problems, any other meetings?
We might. I'm looking at the city's schedule, and for next week, I mean, you have your regular committee of the whole and City Council. I'm not seeing any other night meetings. I know that there were other meetings that the mayor and I had committed to for the 16th, but I will cancel my commitment for that meeting if the 16th works for everyone here and it works for the FAC.
Works for me.
I'm good.
I'm good.
It does not work for me, however, I can modify my schedule. It's my responsibility to this council to do that.
Mr. Mayor, we appreciate that.
Yep.
Yes.
So I guess the direction is to see if we can do a joint meeting of the Finance Advisory Committee and the City Council, but that will still be called a budget workshop. It'll be a joint meeting of the council and the Finance Advisor Committee, tentatively scheduled for the 16th of November, 7:00. Does that sound pretty good with everyone?
Well, it does unless, you know, unless there's a reason to start that late.
Right. You want to start earlier?
Well, you know, we moved it to 7:00 to be consistent with tomorrow because of the Antiglennorth meeting in the afternoon.
David, would 5:00 be too early? How about 5:00?
Yes.
Works for me.
Okay, yeah. That would, I would prefer that also. Mike?
Couple of years ago, part of our backup, we had a, there was a huge spreadsheet. Had to kind of fold it in half, and it had positions by department. Do you remember what I'm talking about? Could we get an updated one of those?
Absolutely.
That would, I think that would facilitate our discussion, to have some numbers in those departments and if they're full-time, part-time, just so that we're all talking about the same thing going forward.
So what I hear is that we're going to get a initial report from the recommendations from the Finance Advisory Committee sent to us tomorrow, so that we can take a look at that. We may or may not address some of those recommendations tomorrow evening, but we will certainly have time to discuss those findings and those recommendations on the 16th, because we have just set a joint meeting of the DeKalb City Council and the Finance Advisory Committee for the 16th of November at 5:00, right here in Council Chambers.
Can I address the staffing plan question?
A bigger pardon?
Can I address the staffing plan question?
Absolutely.
On page 213 of the budget, there is one by department, full-time, part-time. Is that not what you're looking for? Is there something more detailed?
Haven't got that far yet.
Okay, it's 213. It's in the penance.
Yeah, it was on, I was on 125. Yeah, that, it was similar to that, but there's, the big one went back further, went back all the way to 2007, 2008.
Yeah. But Alderman, my court, that structure by department, the full-time, part-time break, but going back further years, so this is the structure. Okay, just wanted to double check. Okay, yes, we will present that.
Because it gives us more of a historical basis of, because everybody talks about 2008 as this major watershed year, and, you know, so I guess we should go back that far. And I found that helpful in the past and
Yes, and I just want to address two points. Number one, I know, I've heard comments or seen comments in the community that there's some confusion over a couple things. Number one, if you look through some of the previous audits, at one point in time, the elected officials were included in that count, so you would have seen an additional nine in that between the mayor, the Alderman, and the city clerk. So it was overinflated by nine because technically as elected officials, you're not employees. Point number two, and I know at some point in the past, there was a different formula. Industry trade is, you account for a full-time as 1.0, full-time equivalent, a part-time is .5. And at some, previously, I don't know, five-plus years ago, they used to break the position into an increment, so .2, .3, .4. So for sake of what we've done, especially in the data that we'll present to you going back those years, is we had HR look at all of them and go with the formula of a full-timer is one, a part-timer is a half.
Alderman Jacobson?
We've had this discussion before. Roomful of new people. The only way to fairly and accurately understand
That was my next
Yeah, I'm sorry, is to understand what we've outsourced and
We have that.
And to have a calculation of outsourcing, and we have never been provided that after several years of asking.
We've provided that, we'll provide it again. We have, we've had an outline of what items that we've outsourced.
In terms of FTE, as a fair per body-to-body comparison to FTE, you can't say we have one or two people now, and I outsourced Mike's role to Pat, so now we only have one FTE and we cut half our staff. No, the cost is still there because Pat's performing the work that Mike was doing. And the only way to do a fair FTE headcount, body-to-body count, is to have a full understanding of what the outsourced responsibilities equal in terms of FTE. When we have that number, then we can see exactly where our staffing is.
Molly, are you familiar with that and how we could attain that?
I understand what he's asking.
I want to be fair with the question.
I understand what the Alderman's asking, but in reality, to me, if you're going to talk about what outsourcing equals to an FTE, then it's your entire budget, right? Because the services that are provided is what this budget is. And I think when we start talking about budget in the future, we need to talk about what is the service and not what is the position. Because the position can just be looked at as position, but until you understand what services that position is providing, do you understand the impact it's going to have on the citizens, right? So you can say, we don't need an HR generalist, right? But what you're really saying is, we're cutting recruitment for the city, right? Or, so you need to bring it back to what the service is being provided. So to me, when you say outsourced services, that's essentially your entire budget, because everything in here ties back to a service. And that service is what we're providing to the citizens. So it's difficult to say this contract would have been an FTE or wouldn't have been when it's a choice that's made every time you look at this budget, right? Leaf collection right now does tie to FTEs, but maybe tomorrow it won't. But we still have FTEs, but now what service do they provide? It should be, I think, more of a discussion on what is the service impact when we go down this road.
And what we'll do is, we'll provide the information. I'm not sure if it's in the way that you're looking for, but I concur with Director Tockington is that it's all about service delivery. The one exception that I can give you as an example, when you look at outsourcing, yes, have we, in general, if we've eliminated a position, have we outsourced it? Absolutely. A good example of that is the city engineer position. When our city engineer left, as you remember, what Director Holdman did is he came to council, asked for a contract for that short term to determine, to analyze what was going to be more cost-effective, to outsource engineering or to keep it in-house. Our analysis has found it's more cost-effective for us to have an employee in-house, plus what we've heard from community members is they want a city engineer. So there are times where we've outsourced. But the concrete example I want to give you where there's an example where we've decreased our staffing, outsourced, and then eliminated that, and that's crossing guards. So if you think of the discussion last year where we made a recommendation to outsource, we had 19 part-time crossing guards. So our analysis showed that we could end up saving money, and even if it was the same cost, it was going to be more advantageous to the city because it was taking the workload off of the police department so that there was an efficiency savings there. So we did that as step one as part of this fiscal year, and through discussions with the school district, we discussions with the school district, we anticipate bringing you an agreement in the next couple of months, which will show that the city would only provide that crossing guard service, the contractual crossing guard service through May of this year. And then by next school year, the city is totally out of it, so we've eliminated those nighttime, 19 part-time positions, we've eliminated that contracting out that service, and the school district takes that over. But there's not too many times, I agree with you, where we take and we've eliminated that service, unless the council has directed to say, don't provide that service anymore, we're looking at what is the best way to do that. We, as an example, contract out snow removal in the downtown. So instead of having our employees that do that, we have an employee, we have a contractual service that does that. We can tell you the dollar amount, but I don't know if then, I, I mean, if you want to make assumptions of how you quantify that into a person, but that's what we can show you right now, is we can outline those services that we contract out, we can outline those costs, but it's not always an apples, apples comparison to say, alright, $50,000 for contracting out snow removal equates to, you know, one full-time public works employee.
I'm going to toss it back to Dave, because I think you're responding to-
Again, there's some that are-
Just a minute, just a minute. You're responding to Anne Marie. The, my rationale in asking the, my reason in asking the question of you, Molly, is to make sure that we receive what it is that you suggest we have not received, and I wanted to make sure that you could, you could see the gist of Alderman Jacobson's question. And I think, I, I think I hear you, yes, you know what he wants.
Right, it'll be essentially what the city manager said. We can provide what we contract out.
Okay.
But it, there's some assumptions you need to make versus-
Right. Before I toss it back over to you, Dave, one more thing, and that is, recently I said to Molly, I said, this is going to be an interesting city council to work with, because we all do have varying opinions. We have opinions on a number of things. So, we appreciate your, your willingness to walk us through, especially a couple of us who are new to this process during this first workshop. So, thank you. Okay, David?
Again, I recognize some are certainly more easier than others. Dean is a perfect example. We know exactly how many FTE he replaced. Yes, we still provide legal services. Yes, we still have that service. He represents either one or two, depending on how you want to look at it, whether cost-wise or otherwise, with some savings at two, but he replaced two full-time employees, so we know-
He replaced three. There used to be four in legal, and we're down to, to one. So he, there were three positions eliminated when the city contracted out.
Correct. So then, to understand what that number would be with that, if that was still inside the city, there wasn't that big of a savings to us. That service is still being provided, but to say we've cut our staff down, we really haven't. We pay them a different way, but we still have the benefit of that service that we're paying for.
And the number you're looking for is the financial number.
And again, I-
The cost. Is that correct?
I, I know when Kathy and I had the discussion when she first came, I said, I don't care how you standardize it, if you want to do it cost, cost methodology, if you want to do it hourly, in terms of a 40-hour work week, if you want to do it based on pure headcount. Standardize a way to do it, so we can compare apples to apples down the staff years, to know exactly what that real staff number looks like.
So do you-
Crossing guards are, again, another perfect example. So we've said yes, now we've outsourced them. So we've cut our city staff by 20%. No, we haven't. We still provide that service. It still costs us money. We can't claim that there's a major reduction in city staff. There isn't at this point.
But there will be by, in fiscal year.
Correct.
So, if I understand what you're looking for, let's use legal as an example. So, I'm not exactly sure of the year that it was contracted out, but let's say it was five years ago in, in 2012, where we had in-house staff. So you would be wanting to look at, what is the cost of that in-house staff five years ago, versus what is the cost for contracting it out now?
I want to see what the body count looks like.
Okay.
Obviously, again, there was, if there were two of us here, and there were two staff, and I'm now paying someone else to do one of those staff's role, I didn't reduce my staff by 50%. I'm just paying it a different way. So the headcount is still two. I can't claim it's only one now, because I've outsourced those responsibilities and that cost. It's still two. It's just going, it's going through a different way of paying it.
Okay.
Until we can see those numbers and standardize, again, however you standardize it, you standardize it, across all the way back to '08, to see, again, one of those services that we did cut in '08. We cut some public works people, but then we had to bring in someone to do downtown snow removal and abatements. That FTE was replaced through contracts, so that FTE didn't disappear, it's just, it's being represented elsewhere in the budget.
Okay. I understand what you're saying. We have presented the data of what we've outsourced in the past. We will try to look at it from a different perspective to see if we can provide additional data to you on that. So I understand what you're saying.
Thank you. And Mike, did Dave speak pretty well for you there?
Yeah, it's, how are we providing the service if we're paying the contract worker to do it? I understand where he's coming from, and it is all services that we're providing. It's just a, how are we providing it, be it in-house or outside a house? Are we replacing, so that we can see, is it more efficient to pay one person rather than three, or, you know, we're still, how much are we paying? Yeah. And I can also see, you know, the whole budget is providing services. So that's still our cost, and our cost is what it is, still what it is.
Alderman Fagan, you had a comment.
Yeah, and, and I get it, you know, with the count, but you can't stop there, because Molly brought up something here that it's, you know, we're here about the money, right? And our services that we put out and what we pay for, and if we go back to 2008, that date, which I think is a great date, you know, we're going to see, we're going to see the money drop. We're going to see the employee drop, but we want to see where it starts coming back up. And I understand about the employee count, but we also have the money, have to have the money on the, with it along with the site, like, because it's all service and employee. And that's when we get into, when we get into departments and what they're doing, and how busy we were back in 2010, and how busy we are here in 2017, or projecting for 2018, how much money has been spent out over that period of time, and how, and how many people were handling it. And I think that will give us a better snapshot, if we could do it that way. I mean, can't be etching a stone, but, you know, I'm saying, pretty close to.
Joe Allen?
Can I, I, I have taken a little bit of a look at some of the old reports, as I was trying to understand what the history of community development has been, and at some point in the past, it didn't exist. You know, their, community development was disbanded, and parts of it went to the manager's office, and part of it went to public works for a year, and then they contracted out some services, and then, you know, so it, it moved a lot, and-
And I, I understand. That's why it's not going to look like it's going to be etching a stone.
Right.
And I get that. I get that. But when we started coming back, I mean, let's, let's go back to 2006, if you go across the street to community development, I mean, that, that office was-
25 people.
Yeah, yeah. And then going back five years later, where it's empty. I get that. But we got to start somewhere on where we want to take a look at, what David's looking for, and what Molly brought up. I think bringing those two things together figures.
Yeah, I think my only point was, I think we'll make every effort to provide that data, but understand that we're going to be a little challenged on how to, where to apply that, or, you know, we'll, we'll have to footnote a lot of things, I believe.
Absolutely.
Because you had, just to build on that as an example, so pre-recession, there was a community development department. Post-recession, community development was eliminated and absorbed by, by public works. You have had DSATs, which is a DeKalb-Sycamore Area Transportation Study, as an example, has been in community development, is now in public works. We've had engineering as a separate department. We have had engineering in public works. We've had engineering contracted out. So you see a lot of moving parts. It's not consistently across the board that you maybe see the same position or the same work group in the same department. It's, it's kind of moved around, but we'll do our best to try to-
We're just talking about service, money, that.
Alderman Fanoukhan?
Well, I'd just like to, also, Molly, if you could take into account too, these FTEs or whatever that we've contracted out, if there'd be some way of trying to indicate what the pension savings have been, that we're now not paying on those employees. So I think that needs to be part of that discussion, too.
You realize we won't have this for tomorrow.
I understand that. And I hope Mr. Jacobson does, too.
I, I hope our, our audience tonight has enjoyed this freewheeling discussion as much as we have. And, and I realize that, are we to the point, Molly, through tonight's agenda where you wanted to be, or are there some other points? What I want to do is allow Dwayne Brown, who has been patiently waiting, he's been the only person who's wanted to speak to us tonight. May I indulge the council to listen to Mr. Brown? Dwayne, you can go right over there by the podium if you'd like. I think that mic is on, I hope. If not, you just have to shout loud the-
Dwayne Brown, fourth ward. Been very interesting today. A few comments I wanted to make. First of all, I don't think it's, it's any too soon to start the financial advisory committee discussion on the budget. I, I don't think it's ever too soon. The finance director made a comment on unemployment. Well, sure, we're, we're just over 4%, but compared to some of the other communities, look at their jobs. We've got a lot of just above minimum wage jobs, where they have 30-plus an hour jobs, so it makes a difference, especially on the per capita income of the cities. I mean, I think our per capita income is under $20,000 for DeKalb. First of all, I wanted to start on the council wanting seven more police officers by 2020. Well, sure, we need the officers. I, I listened to the chief. I don't have any problem saying we don't need them. My problem is, we can't afford them. You know, three more officers will cost us $587,250. I mean, I realize it's $100,000 over and, and overtime over the budget. We're expected to go to 50,000 calls, I believe, by next year. But, the problem is, especially on the pension, the, the police pension is funded at 50%. I mean, the acceptable level on pensions is 60%, the safe level is 80%. The fire pension, I won't even get into that. That's at the, that's at the dangerous level. 50% is too low, and we, we have legacy costs for these officers, and, you know, and that's going to be probably on, on a future generation, not us. They're going to look back and say, why did they hire this many staff, this many police and fire? We can't afford the pension costs on that. The general fund is at 26.2% right now. I think what's going to happen on the general fund, we can't have everything. We can't have a 25% general fund. We can't have a proposed tax increase that earlier's wants to provide for funding for streets and fleet. We can't have everything either. The general fund is going to have to fall below the 25% level. We'll have to worry about the downgrade on the bond. That might happen, but we can't have everything.
You mean the reserve?
The reserve.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. The 25% reserve. The tax levy, 9.5%. You know, the, the problem with our area is they, they level, they put a tax levy on a property tax that is unrealistic. It's unrealistic. I mean, there are houses that are taxed, that are levied at $200,000, and when they sell, they sell for $135,000. Something's wrong here, you know? I mean, the, you know, the township, the township auditor-
Assessor.
Assessor, thank you. And the county assessor, you know, they're a little off-track. Let's be realistic. The, the 4.3 million is needed for streets and fleet. Well, we're not going to get that. We understand that. That's just the need. I'd like to know how many times I've heard the expression, kick the can down the road, when it comes to dedicated fund for streets and fleet. I mean, I couldn't count the number of times I've seen that, I've heard that. But it's going to come to a point, we're not going to have a road to kick the can down. You know, we've got to have a balance between police, between fire and, and staff and everything, and we don't have a balance right now. 13 million is needed for streets. I mean, that's unrealistic. We're under a million a year right now, you know? I realize we need that, but it's not realistic. When the budget comes up, there's going to have to be some sacrifices, some balances, and right now, I don't see, you know, talking about seven police officers, I mean, that's just an example. I mean, it's unrealistic. We have to be realistic, and right now, we're not being realistic. And, you know, I hope on the 16th, the financial advisory committee, you know, and the city council, there's some good discussion on that. But I remember last year's budget, there were two layoffs in the city, you know, and that could have been avoided, you know, if they would have been more planning for that. I think there can be some avoiding, and there needs to be more discussion on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Mayor, just as a point-
Yeah, yes, sir.
Based on, on his comment, the, the two positions that were eliminated happened at the 11th hour, because FAC made a recommendation to reduce revenue projections. The council adopted that recommendation, and I believe it was on the night of the adoption of the budget, which was at the second reading in December. So based on that reduction of revenue, those two positions were eliminated.
Thank you. Molly?
Yes. They, really, we have development in how we're going to pay for it left. So if you-
Your pardon?
I said, we really have development to talk-
Yes.
About, and then how we pay for it. If you wanted to go through it tonight, we can still do it. We've been through the most significant part of the presentation.
What is the wishes of the council? Do we want to go into community development at this point? It's 9:30. How do you feel?
I would prefer to do it tomorrow.
You?
I would be glad to do it tomorrow.
Well-
Someone else said longer. You guys said longer, David.
No, I realize that, right.
You know, they've already, I mean, chief rose to the occasion to speak after his session, but-
Yeah.
We don't need to be all standing in the crowd.
Pardon, pardon the pun, but chief has been a trooper. I mean, today, with the two meetings and all that. So, unless there's any further discussion, I would entertain a motion to adjourn for this evening, and we'll be back in tomorrow.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.